Seven o'clock, I'd like to call to order the meeting of the planning and zoning.
Thank you.
Villages Bartlett, Counties of Cook, DuPage, and Kane, please call the roll.
Bob Bacaro.
Here.
Charlie DeVoe.
Here.
Mark Hopkins.
Here.
Julie Capoducakis.
Here.
George Cozio.
Here.
John Miaso.
Here.
El Sarwas.
Mike Wearden.
Here. You have before you the minutes from the July 7th, 2022 meeting. Is there a motion to approve them?
So moved.
Moved by George, seconded by Charlie. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Charlie DeVoe.
Yes.
Mark Hopkins.
Yes.
Julie Capoducakis.
Yes.
George Cozio.
Yes.
John Miaso.
Yes.
Bob Bacaro.
Yes.
Mike Wearden.
Yes. Okay, so the next item is the public forum. Is there anything that anybody would like to address with us? Is this non-related to the meeting or it doesn't matter?
Correct, not on the agenda.
Anything not on the agenda? Okay, take that as a no, can we move on?
Correct.
Okay, tonight's meeting is case number 22-02, Bannerman Sports Grill Site Plan Review, Special Use Permits for a Restaurant Serving Liquor and Live Indoor and Outdoor Entertainment Events. Are the petitioners present?
Yes.
Okay, please come up to the microphone if you're going to testify. Raise your right hand. Do you soundly affirm that the evidence you're about to give is only the full truth?
He's not first.
Yeah. Do you soundly affirm that the evidence you're going to give tonight is only the full truth?
Yes.
Yes, okay. State your name for the record, whoever's going to speak first.
My name is Mac Exhune, and I'm with Bannerman Sports Grill.
Okay, do we have the mailings, the newspaper, yeah, newspaper and the picture of the sign?
Yes.
Mark, those exhibits A, B, and C. Go ahead and present your case.
Okay, I'm here tonight to talk to you guys about the new site plan for Bannerman's, as well as the special use requests for serving liquor and having it go out for entertainment. But before I give you guys a brief synopsis of the new location, I wanted to do some key partners that we have here with us as well. First is our architect, John Eva Soffer. We also have Justin Wyer, Oscar Garcia, and Mutman Construction. On the phone, we should have our civil engineer, Eric Henke. And finally, last but not least, we have Tom Thunder, who's getting some seats. Tom, company, the sound study for us, which I just like, actually, he's going to be busy to answer some questions. So with that, let me give you guys a brief synopsis of what we want to do. We want to build a new Bannerman's, about $10,000 per foot space located at the Brewster Creek business park. It will be an indoor, outdoor space. Our vision for the new place really is to provide a year-round destination for entertainment, primarily music, and not limited to that, meaning that if we want to have people have a wedding here, if you want to help the South Coast business use better, if you want to have parents bring their children out there, football games, if you want to have people come and play some ball, or perhaps bring home, but it's primarily focused on having year-round music as well. We also want to continue to create destination for sports fans, offer them TV's for their parents, foster their sports fans, and lots of stuff. We want to continue to give back to the community, work with some non-opital conditions. If they can have their meaning in the new Bannerman's, we give a proportion of the folks need to act to that. And finally, in the most important part, we want to foster the environment of state and the climate we have going forward. That's really our vision for the new place. In terms of capacity, we envision having about 272 seats inside, additional 122 seats outside the patio in front of the outdoor stadium. Number hours of operation will be similar indoor to our current Bannerman's on Saturday and Friday night, meaning Saturdays will be open at 11:00 a.m., Thursdays at 11:00 p.m. Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday.
Oh, that's better. Meaning we'll be open Sunday, Monday, Tuesday till 11:00 p.m., Wednesday, Thursday until 1:00 a.m., Saturday, Sunday until 2:00 a.m. That's our liquor license, that's how we are open today. In terms of the outdoor, the patio will mimic the indoor hours. From a music perspective, we will close the music at 10:00 p.m. Sunday through Wednesday, and at 11:00 p.m. Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. I don't envision us having a lot of outdoor music during the week. They'll be very minimal, if any. We certainly will have music Fridays and Saturdays, and potentially some Sundays. What else do I want to tell you guys about this new project? I think I've covered everything, and now we can open it to questions, but I'm hoping that after we're done tonight, I can get a positive recommendation from all of you folks. Thank you. Questions?
This is quite an ambitious project.
Yes, it is, and the timing is ambitious, too.
I mean, even to be able to give money back to nonprofit groups, I think that's wonderful. So it looks as though you have the entrance on Hart Circle and also something on Munger Road? Is that correct?
It's on Hart Circle, but you can see it from Munger Road. There is no entrance from Munger Road to the new place. They'd have to go through Hart Circle to come to the location.
Okay.
Yeah, you have to go off of Humboldt to Hart Circle.
Right. That just looked like a trail on here.
There are two ways off of Humboldt, off of Munger, to get there. I was there today.
Were you?
Yeah.
Did you look at the site?
Yes.
Done your homework?
Are you made up to go fishing in the pond? I did have a question, though. I noticed with all the thistles and stuff out there, there were a lot of goldfinches flying around.
A lot of what?
Birds. When you do your landscaping, are they going to try and incorporate things to attract birds like that? I mean, they're a cool bird.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we'll have to see.
Right. It's just a general question.
We want to make it a warming and inviting environment. Whatever we can do, we'll do that.
And I noticed on the sound study?
Yeah.
I'm looking at the original thing, so it's, it moved like 20 or 30 degrees towards the southwest, is that?
Five degrees, but we brought down the dB level at our sound location from 95 to 92, so that the residential properties to the east and southeast will be on that ambient dB level, meaning that they won't notice the noise.
Okay.
That's why we did that. And based on the sound study that Tom and his company did, we could have increased the dB level during the day levels to 95, but we agreed that we want to keep it at 92, whether it's day or night. One of the things we don't want to do is be a nuisance to our neighbors, so we want to play nice from the very beginning. And we're committed to, if we do notice complaints about noise, to take out our mitigation levels as well. Our goal is to make this be workable for every party involved. So we're looking for the, for everybody's positive outcome in this case. Well, you guys are awfully quiet.
Previously, we were two separate commissions, so we don't have some background in some areas. How is the parking being handled?
We have sufficient parking. I think we're over the requirement. We have, I think, 191 stalls, and I think the code was 178.
Okay.
Devin, maybe you can help me with that?
So you have 189, and you're correct that the, or sorry, then the zoning requirement would be 171.
Okay.
Oh, is that calculated, Devin?
So we looked at multiple uses, so that would be based on the customer floor area, which was, we calculated both the interior customer floor area, and then I included the patio area as well. Then I also included seating for roughly 50, with the bench seating provided for the stage area. Together, that all came out to be the 171 required.
And how about outdoor lighting?
I think we've got the lighting plan as well. We have probably, they're going to bring it up, maybe. So around the stage and the grass area, we have three big lights that will light up at night, and it'll be enough lighting for everybody. Around the building, we have light in each corner. In the parking lot, we have sufficient lighting as well. I don't know if they can bring up the lighting plan or not, but we've submitted something there as well.
General question, how many people do you expect to employ?
So we currently have about 20, and I sort of forecasted that we're going to add an additional 12 to 15 more, so almost doubling our employees' count. So that's the budget right now that we've done, but I envision, as we get busier, we might add more than that, especially in the summer months, where people want to be outside, enjoy a nice evening, and even on the weekends, when you have maybe bigger parties, I envision us having more employees to work.
None of the other businesses have said anything or discussed anything with you?
Not yet. I think we're going to be probably the furthest west of any business in Bartlett, in terms of a restaurant bar.
Oh, yeah, I'm looking at the other.
Companies there?
Companies that are.
Yeah, they're not going to be there primarily on the weekends, so they're all going to be home and not working there. Those buildings will be empty during the weekends, and that's going to be our busy time. And by the time our busy time starts in the evening, they'll be gone home as well. So majority of those buildings will be empty by the time our busy time starts for the restaurant and bar. We did send a public hearing to all of those folks within that area, and I don't see any of them here tonight, so I'm hoping they're okay with it.
I did speak with the business owner directly east of the site, ProMark. I sent him copy, I sent him the link, went over the plans with him over the phone. He did not call, he didn't have any concerns particularly, and he did not call me after he reviewed the plans himself, so.
That was the only call regarding?
That was the only call that I received. Did you receive any calls?
I did not.
I have some questions.
Yeah.
Can we go back to parking, then, for both staff? You figured the capacity inside the facility, right, for customers?
Yes.
You put people out on the deck, and you put 50 people out in the, in the grassy area on those benches?
Correct.
Right? And that's how you got your total number, and then you took that number of patrons, and you did the math according to the code?
Yes, so according to the code, the, whichever is greater, it's either three spaces, or one space for every three seats, or the total customer floor area divided by 60.
Right.
And whichever comes out greater, in this case, it was the customer floor area, and then additionally, the seating for outdoor events.
So the fuzzy area, to me, is what happens if you've got a big hot concert, right? You've got the whole place buzzing, you've got a couple hundred people outside, you've got your 100 people inside and what have you. And are we going to overload? Or can you say, from your history in your current facility, that, you know, that whatever happens outdoors is kind of feeding off of what happens inside? You know, how does the shared thing work, really? And I guess my ultimate question is, what's the real max capacity of this facility, and are we adequately parked for that?
Yeah, so that's a great question. One of the things that we've thought about, and if we do have a concert and we notice that maybe we are in need of more parking spots, a couple of things that we can do. One of the things is to offer some sort of an incentive for our customers to take Uber, meaning that when we have concerts or bands, we charge a cover charge. So if you show us that you took an Uber, maybe you get in for free, just to entice people to take Uber and not drive. So hopefully, that will limit the number of people driving. In addition to that, we've thought about talking to our neighbors and see if we can come up with an agreement that we can use their parking spots on weekends for customers to park there. So I can't speak about what's going to happen because I don't know, but that's a great question. If we do have a concert, it's going to be a lot of people. One of the things that we will do, we will offer an incentive for Uber right off the bat for every concert that we have, and we hope that would minimize people not driving but taking an Uber and having a good time, and there's an incentive for them as well. Anytime you offer an incentive, it entices people to do something. So we hope that that will minimize the number of parking spots needed. In addition to that, as I said, we'll work with neighbors and see if they're in agreement to work some deal out with us so that we can use their parking spots, if we do find that that is going to be an issue going forward. The other thing is, we also have about 15 employee parking spots, so is that count included, Devin, in the overall count? It is?
Yes.
Okay. Does that answer your question, or is it still fuzzy?
It's a concern, and obviously, let's say you get, you need to valet with one of your neighbors, right? But somebody that's closer to your facility says, no, I don't want any part of it, and I don't want people walking across my property off hours either. It kind of puts you in a position of protecting that guy's property as well.
Right.
And then what happens on Hart Circle?
Parking is not allowed on any of the streets in Brewster Creek.
At any time?
At any time.
It's a concern, so I think, you know, it's something that maybe needs a little bit more, you know, it depends upon the success of your facility, right?
Right.
And, and, you know, everybody wants it to be successful, and you certainly don't want to be turning, turning people away, but on the other hand, you know, it's going to have to be controlled and safe, you know? Having people wander around into the different lots on this thing, trying to find their car or what have you, is, it seems like a firmer contingency plan is kind of needed. That's one ques, that's just a comment, and it's certainly not going to stop me from saying this is a great project.
Right.
But it's a real concern.
Oh, I appreciate that, and I have thought about that as well, so we need to step back and come up with a better contingency plan.
Yeah, yeah, and maybe by the time you get to the village board, it might be a good idea to have it in your pocket. The other thing I wanted to ask you about was loading and the truck maneuvering, you know, if you've got Cisco showing up, or beer trucks show up, how exactly does that work up in that side of the, side of the lot? Where do they actually pull in? By the front door?
No, they pull into the employee parking there.
They back in?
John, do you know how that's going to work?
Why?
Could you come up to the microphone?
Can you come up to the microphone? The, what we look at is that the larger vehicles would pull into that rear drive for the employees, and they would probably unload as they pull in, and then be able to back, back out.
So you think they're going to pull in and then back out?
Yeah. They might be able to make that turn, but it may, may create some issues as far as people leaving, employees coming, so, and we were talking about even for pickups, for deliveries, it could be done in the back of the building.
Let me, let me just add to that. Our deliveries today are early in the morning, meaning before 9:00 a.m., where there's no employees there. There is a manager on site that takes deliveries, and we get two deliveries from Cisco and Graco. Those are the two companies that we use, and our intention is to continue to use them going forward. So I don't anticipate there's going to be any cars parked in that parking lot when they deliver, or from Graco and Cisco. On a slight case that they might be late, they might have to come in and back out, but...
You know, for our industrial buildings or, you know, our retail facilities here in town, we say, hey, those maneuvers has to have to happen on the site, and we don't like the idea of backing in or backing out onto the street. Now, I know this is a lightly traveled street and all, but, and I'm not here to, you know, solve a site plan, but it sure looks like those two driveways or those two parking areas can be interconnected with a, with a lay-by loading area, but that's for you to decide, but that's, that's a comment, right? Is that, you know, we're backing in and backing out here. We don't do that anyplace else that I know of. Christie will probably prove me wrong immediately, but that's not something we look for. We look for those maneuvers to be made in the, on the site. That's, that's the second comment. As long as the architect's up. Rooftop equipment fully screened?
Yeah.
Is the rooftop equipment fully screened?
Yes, we, we're considering, we have parapet walls around the perimeter of the building, and we try to utilize those parapet walls to do the screening, but because it is a restaurant, we have fairly large equipment, rooftop units up there. So we do have, instead of using that, the perimeter wall is a screening. We did introduce a actual screen that goes around the three major rooftop units. One that services the entire kitchen area, the toilets, and then we have two units that service the...
That's not shown on the elevations, right?
On these elevations, they were, that was not considered at that time. These were preliminary plans, but...
Okay, okay, what material, so are we fully screening?
Yes.
The equipment in elevation?
Right, the top of the units are about six feet above the roof line. We're near a roof drain, so we're dropping down about a foot from the perimeter. The screen is at the top of that highest point of that rooftop unit.
Beautiful. Okay, what material is it?
Pardon me?
What material is it?
I didn't hear you.
What material is it?
What material is it?
Yeah, what's it made of?
We are using, we are trying to use like a battened siding, vertical siding on the perimeter, so the material that we'd use on the screen would be very similar to that.
Hmm.
It'd be a metal siding, a vertical metal siding. I'm not sure if the manufacturer of the screen has an exact match, but it's going to be very similar.
All right. Don't mean to get too fussy on you, let's, let's talk about the dumpster area real quick.
Okay.
All right, now is that thing sized for the number of dumpsters and grease barrels and all that goodie that you have now at the existing facility? I think I'm seeing three dumpsters.
Yes, so we have three for the new place as well.
Okay, but that's, that's enough for your operation?
Correct. We have three today, but we only used two of them. We've kept the third one there just in case.
Yeah.
But in the future, we anticipate having three.
Okay, and you know, all of your pallets and all of that, you know, the pile of stuff that shows up outside, that all fits inside that enclosure?
Correct. That enclosure today is also being used by LA Tan. They've got their garbage can in there as well, so you see more than what we'll have in the new Bannerman's, but we even have space for three.
Great.
Just to add to that, when I, myself and Mac were discussing about his current use, he had indicated the size of the trash containers that he uses presently. We actually updated it a little bit in cubic yards, but we sized the enclosure that if he needed to go either larger, the enclosure is adequate to handle a larger cubic yard container.
Okay, all right, so you're showing, okay, good. You thought it through?
Yes.
And it fits? Okay.
As was stated earlier, I'm concerned, like it was mentioned, about that, the radius of that curve, that vehicle, the trucks are going to have to either back in or back out. It seems risky in that there just might not be enough space for the truck to either back in or back out. That, that radius and the width of that street there concerns me.
Well, we try to maximize the parking of that in for employee count. There's, I believe there's 15, I don't know, 11 back there? Six and five, yeah, 11 stalls. If that was a concern, we could possibly lose one of the employee stalls and then just widen that radius as you come in, to increase the turning radius for any vehicles. You'd lose a stall, of course.
What about bringing deliveries? If they come in at 9:00 in the morning to come through the front door, come in the other entrance?
Well, there are two doors in the rear, so those would be your service doors. There's a, if you look close to the plan, we've got a corridor, a corridor on each side. One basically goes directly into the kitchen. The other side is the exit from the dining area. It goes past the public toilets, and then it goes directly out of the building. So both of those exits would be used for servicing the kitchen, as well as emergency exit for the public to get out of the building.
So to your point, we could use the front door, they just have to walk through the dining area, it'll be a longer walk for them, but that is doable as well because it's during our non-operating hours. So if we do find that that's an issue for them getting in and out, we have that option of bringing them to the front door and taking the delivery that way, but I'm hoping that won't be an issue until we start to get the deliveries and see how it goes. And to John's point, maybe we'll lose a stall and make that area bigger so they can get in, in and out of there easier. Maybe that's an option for us as well.
Okay.
A little bit more?
Okay, go on.
Okay. For Mr. Thunder, could you give a brief summary of the work that you did, and then your conclusion, and the two modified conditions that are being suggested in your report?
Do I see a dot? Oh, there we go. It's kind of working. Okay, well, good evening. My name is Dr. Tom Thunder. There's more than my last name for credibility, I suppose, in the area of noise. I have a doctorate degree in audiology, which is a science of hearing, and postgraduate training, work in acoustics at the Illinois Institute of Technology. So I'm both an acoustical engineer and an audiologist, and I've worked in Illinois for over 35 years, always on noise issues. So we've studied every kind of noise problem. I'm very familiar with the, the state of Illinois noise regulations. I'm on their mailing list for when they make changes and so forth, for comments and so forth. And I see that Bartlett has adopted the state of Illinois noise code, difficult code for most towns to understand and comprehend, and even more difficult for towns to even enforce it. Most towns don't understand it and don't have the equipment. So in order to try to kind of simplify that a little bit, the state of Illinois actually limits the noise at different frequencies, low, middle, and highs. And to simplify that, we added all of them up, and we call that the DBC scale, the overall scale. And the reason we use the C scale instead of other scales is that we know that live band music is heavier in the bass, because you have a bass kick drum and you have a bass guitar. We also know that the bass sounds propagate for further distance without atmospheric absorption or absorption by vegetation and things of that sort. So we've equated that to, those limits to the C weighted scale, and in our report, we indicated that the state has a limit that limits the daytime noise to 73 DBC and nighttime to 64. That's specifically for noise from a commercial property to residential, because they have different codes depending on the source side and the receiver side and so forth. But more important than that, it's been my experience that whether or not there's an impact, has more to do with... there's an impact, has more to do with the ambient noise than it does with some absolute limit. If I'm out in rural Illinois, and I've done a lot of wind turbine type of noise, one of the criticisms I've had against the wind turbine manufacturers who always come in and say, we will meet the state standards, that's not good enough because the state standard is higher by about 15 dB than the noise levels at night in rural area. If anybody's been out in the rural area, you know, you're down to about 30 to 35 dB. On the other hand, if you're in toward the city of Chicago with urban noise being up there, we find that even the background noise, the ambient noise, is significantly higher than a code limit. So really, what matters is the ambient noise that currently exists in an area to assess impact. And you get potential impact the higher the source noise is above the ambient. In other words, the more audible it is, the more impact it's going to be. And that's pretty intuitive for most people to understand. So part of our study was to get a good handle on just what kind of ambient noise we're talking about during the times that the bands would be there. And this is a plot here that shows we made ambient noise measurements right there on the property. Now, normally, we like to make measurements where the residents are. But without easy access to residential property, we don't want somebody putting equipment there at night. Steve chose to put that monitoring equipment right there, and it's a more conservative place because the closer you get to Route 59, the higher the ambient noise is going to be. So we expect that this position is a conservative estimate of ambient noise. As you get closer to 59, it would only go up, not down. And so the ambient noise that we measured in the frame of 10:00 p.m. at night to 11:59 p.m. was 64 dB. So we did it at that timeframe for the reason of the fact that that's the most critical timeframe for residents. As you go further into the evening, as you would expect, the sound levels go down. Why they go down? Because traffic goes down. So as traffic starts to drop on Route 59, all the noise levels in those areas are going to go down. So it's not important to make these measurements during the day. We make them during the time that the venue would be performing out there. So we developed an ambient establishment of 64 dB, which happens to be the State of Illinois Noise Code. So it's on par with that. Now, what we did is we used a modeling program, which is very sophisticated. It's used throughout the world. It has international reputation. It's called Sound Plan. And it's a very rigorous examination of how sound propagates from any source, in this case, a live band source. And it takes into consideration a lot of things, other than just distance. It takes into consideration how much atmospheric absorption is there. It takes into consideration the topography. So as that changes, sound levels would change. It takes into consideration vegetation, and it also considers reflections from buildings. So some buildings will reflect sound toward and collect, and you can see, sound normally goes out in a circle. So just like a pond, if you were to drop a stone in the pond, you see the ripples that go out in a spherical fashion. And if there was nothing in this area, that's what I would expect to see, contours that were round. But you don't see that here. And the reason you don't see that, it almost looks like a starfish, is because of the unique reflections of sound off those large buildings in the industrial area. They both shield the sound, but they also reflect it. And you can see where it penetrates through, the red is what we're talking about, is between these buildings. But on the south side, for example, these buildings, it's quiet. So the way we calibrated this is we calibrated it so the colors, every time you go to us, never color change, it represents a change of 3 dB. Why do we select 3 dB? Because that's the smallest difference that the human ear can perceive, three decibels. So every time you go from one color to the next, you're dropping 3 dB as you're moving away from the sound stage. We also set the background sound at 64 dB because that's what we measured. We set that to green. And as you can see, this is the original prediction without any sound treatment whatsoever. And the only green that you kind of see is over here and maybe over here and down over here. So it was pretty obvious to us that some treatment would be worthwhile. And so the next slide shows you what happens when you implement the treatment. So you can see a big difference between that slide and that slide. Okay? So what we planned to do on this treatments slide was to rotate the stage five degrees clockwise. That means you're directing these loudspeakers off in a different direction so you don't get as much spread out toward the neighbors. Secondly, using the modeling program, we put in a wall on the east side of there to act as a barrier to keep the sound from going off in that direction. And also, we realized that there need to be some administrative controls as well. Administrative controls means there'd be a sound engineer there monitoring it. The biggest problem that we've had with band noise, and we've been all throughout the Chicago area with live bands and so forth, is when a venue does not have a sound engineer. Most good bands, and I'm in a band myself, I realize the importance of having somebody out in the audience to actually listen, mixing, to make the vocals up higher, the bass a little bit lower, that kind of thing, and also to monitor the overall level. Now, that can vary a lot from one type of genre to the next. So for example, acoustic country set or jazz or something like that is going to be lower than a pop rock group. We modeled this using the worst-case scenario, which was a pop rock group. So as you can guess, those are the loudest ones you would imagine. And so if you have a monitoring engineer there, they can sit there like a lot of bands do with a sound level meter, and they can monitor the loudness of the band. And our recommendation was to use a 15-minute average, limiting to 92 dB past 10 o'clock. It'd be higher than that if you want during the daytime because the daytime noise levels are higher and so forth, another 3, 5 dB or something like that. But the important thing is somebody's there watching and monitoring the sound. So if they see that it gets up too high, then they can make adjustments on the overall level to bring that down. So really, this is a two-pronged approach. One is a physical acoustical approach where we rotate the stage a bit and put a sound barrier on. And the second prong is having a sound monitoring engineer there that understands how to do monitoring and so forth and implement it well. And when that's done, you can now see that green is all over where you would want it to be. It's all over in the residential areas. It's still high, obviously, here as you're close to the band. That's going to be above 92 dB or so. But as you move away from that, because of the distance, which is about 1,500 feet, and because of the natural shielding that you get from these large buildings, that sound will dissipate down to about the ambient levels by the time it gets out to the residents. Okay?
Very good. Thank you.
I do have a quick question to ask. So I don't know if there's other sites available near this location, but I'm assuming it would only help if there were more buildings added, if there were more businesses to go in around where this plan is developed?
Yes. If there are more buildings in the area?
Yes. It can only help.
Yes. A building acts as a very formidable noise barrier, you know, better than a wall because it's so massive and it's so tall. And you can see on the slides there, you can see behind each one of those big buildings, the sound level drops significantly because the building itself is acting as a sound barrier.
Okay.
Yep. Okay?
Could you talk about the two conditions that you wanted, or staff can do that?
So when we had the, when we wrote our memo, we did not have the revisions. So we wanted to revise the two conditions, B and C, to address what the petitioner has agreed to, which was the rotation of the stage, installing the sound wall as recommended, and then also that the 92 DBC level be the limit at the mixing station at all times. So the petitioner has agreed to those conditions, and they have been reviewed by the village's environmental consultant, Gary Deegan. We went over this. We had a Zoom call with him earlier last week to make sure that we're trying to mitigate the noise as much as possible.
So everybody here is on the same page, right? We want all this to work and work well, but there's language in the staff report about if-then situations if we get complaints. And then there's going to be a log kept by the sound engineer on the site, right? So we've got kind of a combination of honor system and double-checking with the neighbors. So how exactly does that work?
So typically now, the police department receives noise complaints periodically from several of the bars that have live entertainment. They make a report, and then we would be able to look at their amplifier permit, see which bands were playing. We'd be able to get copies of their logs. It's something staff would then be following up on. I've already talked to Deputy Chief Prokakis, who will be promoted to chief shortly. And so he's on board with this as well. He was glad that we involved him to make sure that this does not become a nuisance for the residents.
Petitioners on board with all of us?
Yes, we are. We've had a difficult time with the current bannermans with one particular residence that's about 150 feet away from the location. So we don't want to have that issue going forward. That's not our intention. So I'm willing to mitigate or put mitigation in place now so that we don't have issues in the future. In addition to that, if we do have complaints and they're verified by the staff, I'm willing to take further mitigations to limit that noise. Our intention is not to be a nuisance to our neighbors and keep them awake at night. Our intention is to provide a good environment for people to come enjoy good music, and our neighbors are comfortable sleeping at night. That's our intention, and we're committed to that, and we'll put any mitigation needed to be able to meet that.
And at this point, you're not going to have a lot of competition with other businesses like yours with blending noises where people are going to have a hard time. I'm impressed with a lot of the safeguards that you're trying to do. When I first heard about this move out there, I thought, why would they want to go way out there? You know? But you have a lot of good ideas. I'm impressed.
Primarily, that was the intention, to go about 1,500 feet away because we knew that it'll be difficult to get this approved if we were close to residential areas. Having outdoor music is noisy, and so we didn't want to do it somewhere close to residential communities.
It's amazing how well you can hear the traffic on 59 even late at night from quite a distance, you know?
No, I did a quick study of the traffic count on 59. It's 34,000 cars per day on Sterns and 59, 11,000 cars per day on Sterns and 59 that are away. So you're talking about 45,000 cars that go there every single day. Now, during the night, I'm sure that lowers. But I would imagine on the weekends, it's busier because people want to go out and have a good time. So maybe it's not 45,000, but maybe it's 30,000 cars going back and forth by there. So there's a lot of traffic that goes...
Yes. That north-south row of homes, do you realistically expect them to be able to hear?
I was going to address that. This study does not say they're not going to hear it. They're going to hear parts of it. Because, you know, when you talk about music, it's up and down. So they may hear some of the peaks and then not hear the others. So the criterion for annoyance is not that it's inaudible. It can be audible. The issue is that the average level of the live band does not exceed the average level of the ambient noise. That's a valid criterion. Also, I should point out, too, if you're talking about complaints, the model that we use is what's called a favorable propagation model, meaning the model assumes that there's a gentle wind blowing from the sound source toward the receivers because wind can carry the sound. And temperature inversions will do that as well. I live in Pingree Grove. When I get up in the morning walking the dogs, I can hear traffic along the expressway 2,500 feet, fairly loud. That's because as the sun is coming up and it's warming the upper atmosphere, it bends that sound right back down toward me. But when the sun starts to come up further and there's a more even distribution of temperature, then you don't hear it nearly as much. Okay? There's not going to be a temperature inversion here, but there could be a situation when people might complain. That might be when the wind is blowing from the west to the east in that particular case, or maybe fairly strongly. On the other hand, if the wind is the opposite direction, they may not hear it at all. So this is a situation where the motto is being conservative, but it can't possibly cover every meteorological condition that would exist out there.
Well, and most of those homes would have better insulating windows than you would have in an older neighborhood, too. So they wouldn't necessarily hear as much as others might, like where you are now.
Right. Right. And the environmental laws, most of them, including the state of Illinois, consider a criterion, an indoor criterion, where they assume that the windows are partially open in the homes. That's how the EPA devised the criterion, and the state of Illinois pretty much adopted what the USCPA had adopted as well.
I have to say, I'm impressed with the outcome of this study. It seems to take a lot into consideration and address as many possible things.
From my experience, it is always more enjoyable for me as an acoustical specialist to be involved in the planning stage. Once these things go up, and that's a factory, that could be a dog kennel, it could be anything, once it goes up, my hands are tied in terms of what can do. You couldn't come here and say, well, let's rotate the stage five degrees. That's pretty expensive, okay? You can do it on paper. And so a program like this allows us to plan for this, to mitigate it at the design stage, not to try to do expensive or prohibitively difficult retrofit type of movements and techniques.
I understand what you said, too, because I live in an area of Bartlett that during the Streamwood festivities periodically with perfect wind conditions, I can hear some sounds creeping through over, whatever you want to call it. But it's not, it's not a constant annoying sound. It's there occasionally.
You can hear it.
Right. And most of the time, you can't even understand what it is. It's just there. And that, I hope that that's what this picture is showing me.
Yep. So the point is, you could very well get isolated complaints. But before you consider it to be an issue, we'd want to take a look at what were the wind directions at those times that they complained and the kind of music maybe, and take a look at some other things instead of just looking at it as this isolated case represents the whole community.
Right. That makes sense.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I have a question for the petitioner. So I'm anticipating this is going to be a very good business for you. I think people are going to really want to be going out here and enjoying the outdoor music. A question I have is, when they're outside, what kind of exits are there if there's music playing and they're outdoors? Are we fenced in any? I mean, I see a high-screen fence. If they had to evacuate that area, where would they evacuate? Is it all open to...
So, John, can you speak to that? We've got exits around the fenced area as well in each corner there. Maybe John can give us a better...
Yeah. The rear area of the building where the concerts would be, the bocce ball, would all be fenced in with an aluminum fence, six foot high. Once we get up toward the employee parking, we have actually a screen fence there, which would go from where the trash containers are, the enclosure, all the way to the building. That would be a fence that would also be six foot high, but that would be a solid fence for screening. The issue there was Matt had, so all people that want to come for a free concert park their car and want to watch. So we decided that's the place to have the screen effect. So... And then, as we said, and from the original concept, the stage itself was a little bit farther to the northwest. And one of the comments we got from staff was to move the stage closer to the building to mitigate some of the sound effect. So that's what we did. So that whole rear section is screened now. And so that, there are two exits from each corner down by the bocce ball or the beanbag throwing. That's an emergency exit. And at the opposite corner where the refuge area is, there's an emergency exit there. There are other exits out. Behind the stage area, there's a door, but that would be more for staff getting back and forth out of the building into the area behind the stage. That also could be used as an emergency exit if needed because we could put emergency hardware on that door. hardware on that door, so that way, if in case of some emergency, you'd have actually the three exits. And then you have actually another exit, which goes out directly to the front of the building, which would be near the handicap parking. So essentially, you really have four exits out of the outdoors area. And then also, you have an exit you could go through the building if necessary, if there was some emergency that needed to evacuate the people.
What type of, and this is for staff, what type of, you know, protocol is it for an outdoor venue like that? I mean, in a situation of safety, if somebody did need to evacuate, you know, for a potential threat or something like that, what is typically?
Commander Rabaski worked with MAC to set up some of these emergency exit locations, so it was discussed. The police department does review all of our site plans when we go through the process for those types of concerns.
Okay.
I assume the fire department signed off on this?
Of course, and for me?
Well.
The fire department.
I think they reviewed it and they signed off, correct?
Yes.
I believe that the location of the gates and then the path of egress kind of shown here was added as a response to their comments, the fire department and police department.
That fence that's surrounding the back area, is that a solid fence?
Along the detention pond is, that's the aluminum fence, six foot high. We did include some details of the different types of fence, the screen fence versus the aluminum picket fence.
So it is a picket fence?
Yes.
You'll be able to see through it?
Exactly.
Okay.
You want people from Mongol Road that go by there, so they see that?
I think it's a much nicer look. And from inside your property, out across the lake.
Correct.
A solid wall fence, I would think is very obnoxious. So the picket fence is a good idea. And I do have a question about lighting in the parking lot. Are those lights going to be on all night, or at what point would they be turned off? I understand that you may have something running until 10 o'clock, but what would be a realistic turnoff? Would you have 11, 12?
Because we might be open indoor later than 11, 12, maybe even until 2:00 a.m., I would envision those lights being on almost all night long.
The 2:00 a.m. is the answer to the question.
I just had one thing on this photometric plan. One of the comments, the last go-around with staff, was that, should we add some lighting in behind the building where the stage is? So along that rear line that we have, the picket fence, we did add actually four additional fixtures, cutoff-type fixtures, to light that area. So when activities are over for the day, those lights will go on, allow the people to exit safely, go back into the restaurant, or leave if they'd like. But there are now, there is another photometric, I'm not sure if that's been submitted, that shows those four lights that were added in the back of the area. So, and where you can see, it's very dark behind the building. Now there are four pole fixtures which will light that area up.
Now, that picture makes it look very well-contained, so I'm guessing it's pretty realistic, right? The lighting for contained to the area, it's meant to light up. We wouldn't have people complaining of spillage from lighting.
That's a requirement.
That's a requirement. We don't allow, we measure the foot handle measurements at the property line, which are pretty restrictive. And also, the residences to the east are up about 15, at a 15-foot higher elevation. There's a large berm on the east side of Humbrock Circle. So those homes are up higher than this site.
And are these lights the type that are more concentrated, focused downward, rather than radiating out?
Correct. Lighting nowadays is much more focused than what it used to be. There's not as much spillage. With LED lighting, they're able to really focus and illuminate the areas that they need to.
Just add to that, if you look at the new photometric plan, you will see that for the lighting that we have in the rear of the building, the light focus, the intensity is directly under the fixture. It doesn't spread out. It doesn't do any, add any light pollution. As I said, they typically call that a full cutoff fixture. So there's no light pollution that's called by any of the fixtures that are out here.
Anyone else?
I'd like to say something nice.
Thank you.
First of all, the building looks great. Nice job. Yeah, and boy, this, tonight, this is a culmination of a good process. And, you know, if Tom showed up, you know, if Tom hadn't showed up, we would have had an entirely different meeting. And you're cooperating with him and then working in advance to preclude any problems is huge.
Yes.
So I want to commend staff, commend petitioner, consultants, nice work, right? Makes it easy for us, I think. On the other hand, I think you have to be careful going into the village board and be able to tell a good story about parking.
Okay.
And then seriously consider, you know, loading and how that really works with truck motions. Like George said, watch that radius and, you know, if there's possibly another way that you can improve that, then it's a good time to think about it.
Appreciate that feedback. We will think about that for sure. And I also want to commend the staff. They've been thorough. We've gone back and forth several times to plan for this the right way. They've asked for more than I wanted to, but I've been okay, and we've done a good job getting this started the right way. But I will keep those two points in mind. The parking might be a difficult issue, but we have to come up with something that will hopefully satisfy everybody. The in and out of the trucks, I think will be easier. We'll figure something out to make sure that they can do that properly without any issues. So hopefully, we will have better information for the village board in terms of parking. We'll meet with them in September.
I'm not an engineer or a designer, but like I'd said earlier, that curve concerns me. And is it possible to somehow, and maybe I'm oversimplifying it, flatten that curve out to give you more street area?
So that curve, they can come from both sides. So it's not necessarily coming from one side. The delivery trucks can come from the other side and it'll be straight through. It's kind of hard to see it, but the heart circle goes in a circle way and it comes out two sides.
Isn't that indentation on the north side there is pretty large, where you're going to be coming in and out of your employee parking lot?
So coming from the north side, they can just come in without any issues. Coming from the east side, they might have to make a turn.
Correct, so the, easier for them to come in from that north central, yeah.
Correct.
But that is a large cul-de-sac or chunk out of the road there that would allow for deliveries without.
I just need to figure out what that opening is, because I don't really know. And, you know, if we can increase that a little bit more, we will do it.
Well, I could do a donut in there with my truck, and it wasn't.
But we'll keep that in mind. We'll try to figure something better for that, based on what we see the opening might be. As John said, we might have to lose one employee parking spot, but we can probably make that bigger. And then communicate with the delivery drivers to maybe use the north entrance as opposed to coming from the east, so it'll be easier for them. And if those don't work, we can always take the deliveries at the front door, as I said before, it's before our start time. But that's a Plan C kind of a thing. Plan A would be to use that delivery side and make that wider, and hopefully, it'll work for everybody.
Any other questions?
Just a comment. When I was out there today, along that south loop of Heart Circle, it looks like somebody uses that as their drag strip. So you're going to take away somebody's drag strip.
Maybe.
I mean, there was some burnt rubber.
Really?
So I've always got all the drag strips.
Since this was a public hearing, I think we just make note for the record that no members of the public were here.
We still have to open.
Have to open it?
You can open it and then close it.
Okay.
Any comments from the public? No one's here from the public. Any more talk or motions?
I make a motion, we approve 22-02 Bannerman's Sports Grill.
Okay, at this point, we have a motion on the floor. I shall close the public. Second.
With the amended conditions?
Recommendations?
Sure, with the amended recommendations.
Okay, motion on the floor then to recommend approval with the amended recommendations. Is there a second?
Second.
George and John both kind of went at the same time.
Second, yeah.
All right, John? Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Charlie Devote?
Yes.
Mark Hopkins?
Yes.
Julie Capodacocas?
Yes.
George Cozio?
Yes.
John Miaso?
Yes.
Bob Ikaro?
Yes.
Mike Weirden?
Yes. Okay, we shall assign a positive recommendation to the board. It should be on, what, at the end of the month, maybe?
It is going, I'm getting it on September 6th.
Okay.
All right, let's get her built.
Yeah. When are you hoping to open?
We are planning, it's an aggressive timeline, may of next year. That's the plan now, if everything falls into place. Actually, we'll be open gate first. That's in parallel to our lease being done with the current location, which we have this year.
Ah.
We want to make sure that we don't have any downtime between the current place and the new place. It all works well, and the pressure is on John to get it done for us, so we're hopeful it's happening.
Very good.
Very good.
Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Nothing else, other than new business, old business?
Brian Maraz had a death in the family, so that's why the rules and procedures were not included on this.
Who had a death?
Brian Maraz had a death in the family. So because of that, we're going to bring the rules and procedures back next month, hopefully to be adopted.
Okay. So there should be a meeting next month. Anything else? Any motions to adjourn? Moved by John?
Second.
Seconded by Bob? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Okay.